Director Moore, if you could, take the next five minutes and lead us through your slides.
Okay.
And then we'll start questions.
Councilman, just to confirm, this session is just called Green Infrastructure, so there's only two services discussed here, park maintenance and urban forestry. And then that final session is for the rest of Wreckin Parks. And we already covered the youth stuff. So there's just two in this particular session.
Right, so this green infrastructure is defined as park maintenance and urban forestry. And then at 11:30-ish, we will begin all the other services related to Wreckin Parks. Director Moore.
Good morning, councilmembers. Vice Chair Pinkett, we're here to talk about green network and our green infrastructure. The two divisions I'll briefly talk about is park maintenance. Our park maintenance division is a division that's responsible for maintaining all of our athletic fields, all of our outdoor courts, our tennis courts, all of our parks. We currently have an existing contract with, help me, I can't, what's, Lorenz. One of the things that, the current contract, we made an amendment starting in June for our parks to be cut every week now, every seven days versus they was on a every 14-day cycle forever in a day. So we have made adjustments, so we should see significant improvements. In conjunction with South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, they started kind of the polling of this in the Middle Branch site, and you can really see a significant difference by getting these parks cut every three, every seven days. The other division quickly is our urban forestry. Of course, our urban forestry is responsible for maintaining all of our trees, the planting of our trees, maintaining our trees, as well as the removal and the proactive pruning program that was established. How long ago, Eric?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, so that we can try to be more aggressive and be more proactive to prune up our trees, which also helps in times of storms. In addition to, trying to flip to that. Also, it's on our urban forestry is where we have our Count Small, which is the whole purpose. It's how we can reuse and repurpose our existing trees. So that's the two divisions that are focused on our greening infrastructure.
Thank you, sir. The first question I had was related to park maintenance. The budget book refers to Project Open Space funds totaling $6 million in this budget. Can you speak to what projects are being funded by that $6 million?
The Program Open Space Fund is, of course, this money is earmarked at the state level. One of the challenges with the Program Open Space Funds is that the state delegates have some say and control over how some of that money is allocated. So what we do is we spend roughly $3 million for staffing between park maintenance and also our capital staff to help with some of our capital projects. And then we spend approximately 1.5, 1.6 in capital projects that we've identified. And then this past session, the state delegates identified the remainder, which was roughly about 1.3 million for capital projects that maybe their constituents had requested of them. But I can get you a full list of how that money is broken out. But one of the, we pay for our Conservation Job Corps. That's roughly 120,000? $120,000. That gives our young people an opportunity to connect with nature, also learning more so about the park maintenance. And that's in connection with DNR and MOED. We also pay for all of our park stewards. Our community aides are paid out of this fund. We have, several of our architects are also paid out of this fund from our capital. And some of the bigger projects that was funded this year was the Cherry Hill Project, finishing up the funding for the Cherry Hill Project and some smaller park maintenance. The Gwens Fall Maintenance Yard is one of our facilities that needs to be replaced, but several of our other facilities need to be replaced as well.
So is $6 million the total that we receive?
Yes, sir. We receive a total of $6 million. We was able to allocate roughly 4.7 million this year. And like I said, $3 million of that went towards personnel costs.
And so you mentioned, I think, previously about the fact that the state legislators have much say in how the Project Open Space dollars are allocated to... So are you saying the state legislators asked that 3.5 million be used for staff?
No, we, what we did was we put our ask in for how we wanted to allocate the full $6 million.
Okay.
And then the state legislators honored 4.7 of our requests. And then they identified roughly 1.3 million of projects that they felt was important in their various districts. There was 100,000 that was allocated for the Seminario Barreedom from, I think that's District 40. District 45, there was a half a million dollars that was allocated for Phase II of Ambrose Kennedy. There was another 50,000 that was allocated for the Johnson Green Space, that's in that, also in the Ford Field. And there was one additional project that was allocated. But their total was roughly just close to 1.3, but they honor at least the 4.7. And like I said, what we really try to do is, as much of that, we want to try to enhance our staffing with the Program Open Space funding. And so capital roughly has close to a million, and park maintenance has 2 million. Another thing that we're doing a pilot program, one of the biggest challenges that we hear every year is the, you know, trash in the parks. And so what we've, I guess years ago, Wreckin Park had their own load packers. And once the agency went through some downsizing, that became the role of DPW. But I mean, there are some areas that we're trying to improve upon. So what we did was we used, this year, we, in our vehicle requests, we asked for one load packer. And we're going to identify three individuals to start our pilot program and see if we can cover the gaps where DPW is not able to, to meet our needs. Because there is a higher demand in the summer because, of course, we have more kids that are in the centers on a daily basis. Those kids are eating meals every day, so that trash, it needs to be picked up multiple times in a week.
And do we typically, is that a typical allotment, $6 million a year for Project Open Space? Or does it fluctuate?
The $6 million, is that, you talking about how we allocate?
Is that typically what we receive annually?
Yes, sir. $6 million is what we receive annually.
And are, with the request, the $3.5 million request, are they such that that same amount would have to be requested in next year's Project Open Space? So what I'm trying to say is, are we going into next year knowing that 3.5 million is already?
No, sir. Every year we have to put the request. The way the legislation is written, the maximum that they commit that Wreckin Park have full control, that they know that they can allocate is 1.5. The remaining is up for discussion each year. But like I said, we build a strong case with the state delegation, and they support us for the most part. But there were some projects that they wanted to fund. But the $6 million is now a, is the max that we will receive because it was a step process. I think it started in 2016 with this legislation. Initially, it was 3.5, and next year they increased, but now they've gotten to the total of $6 million. But in the first two years of this legislation, all of the money was allocated beyond the 1.5.
When do you start determining what your ask is for Project Open Space?
Capital started working, is it valid, when does it do, in February?
We started in November.
So we started putting our plan together in November, how we want to, it's not just for the POS, but how we want to address all of our capital needs for the upcoming year. As you may know, we are sending information by capital that says, you know, from our planning department says that your max capital request this year, CIP, will be 10 million. So we try to identify these projects. And then we also try to figure out where we can make up that difference in our POS fund. So we'll start in November.
So according to your schedule, what would be the most appropriate time for a councilperson or a community to bring requests to Wreckin Parks?
I mean, I would say by November.
Okay. Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. Hi, how are you all?
All right.
Thank you for what you continue to do to maintain the parks and forest, beautiful greenery in our city. I guess I want to specifically hone in on some areas, and I'll just name those as examples because I'm sure there's areas around the whole city. But as you know, we're trying to work hard on human trafficking and things like that for the, a better quality of life for our constituents. There's, and I'm trying to hone in on your partnerships of how you deal with maintenance as well. And of course, you know the Penhurst Park in, on Garrison Boulevard in West Arlington. The police has, they have to constantly put one of their main high beam lights there. And clearly, it's a park that needs lighting, better lighting. And, you know, that's also a part of park maintenance. I mean, it's like in dire need of getting better, strong lighting so that high beam light can go somewhere else. It's just terrible that that light has to constantly be focused on that street in that park for, you know, illegal sexual activity. So I want you to really, and the community just works hard in trying to keep that alleviated. And then we have a park, then we have other kinds of parks, like in Park Heights around Shirley and Paul Mall, that two main retired community people that live in that area keep the grass cut, maintain it. It's a big, huge park. Again, for them to really utilize it, it needs to have some better lighting to keep, so they can participate and do activities at dusk and so on. They took it upon themselves to take care of that park. And there's a lot of little, small parks in square backyards, not just in Park Heights, but in other areas of the city that belong to Wreckin Parks. And they need to, you know, there needs to be some kind of plan to start really helping and taking care of that as well, or at least communicating with the people in the neighborhood that maintain that and have some kind of partnership that way. I'm sure there's several areas like that around the entire city. Any comments on that?
I think one of our, we understand that there's challenges with maintaining our green space. We have over 4,600 acres of green parkland. We try to do the best we can with the staff that we have of our size. So we are always looking for partners. We have, we're excited about our new community engagement strategic partnership division that we've started. And one of their goals is to continue to find partners in the community that's willing to help support some of our activities in the city. I mean, this past year, we had over 160,000 volunteer hours. And that's a lot of hours to get people out to volunteer in our parks. But we, and we appreciate that, and we want to continue each year to try to partner with as many people as we can. But I think one of the things that we're trying to do as an agency too is to be more strategic of how we spend our funding and how we can be, you know, making sure that we're being efficient and effective in the work we're doing. So we will definitely look at some of those areas that, you know, the areas you mentioned. But I will tell you that there's many of these situations or examples that you're using throughout our city. And we're just, we're trying to be strategic and figure out ways of how we can tackle some of this. And like I said, one of the biggest things we saw immediately was, you know, all of the parks that we have our contractors cutting, they're getting cut every 14 days. And everybody, anyone that knows anything about grass knows, if you're cutting your grass every 14 days, I mean, after day four or five, it's going to become challenging for people to use. So that was something that we identified, and we had to be really creative with how we could shift the money to cover this cost. But in the summer months, that grass needs to be cut every seven days. And we want not just our main major parks, we want all of our parks cut. And that was a sacrifice that we had to make. So we are identifying areas, and we're trying to find fixes. But it is going to take us some time to do it. And it's going to, some of it's going to come down to funding. And I know everybody's going to come in here, and they're going to talk to you all, and they've talked to administration about some of their challenges with funding. But I mean, it is a concern that we have to definitely look at too.
And for finance, please, you know, listen and consider the help that they need with this because remember, we are still trying to figure out ways to stop crime in our cities. And a lot of murders and things happen on parkland that is, you know, not maintained. And, you know, extra funding would help with this. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, and to your team. I think you guys do a pretty good job with both communication and reaching outcomes, especially in my district that has plenty of park space, for sure. A couple of questions I had, well, one, I'll just start with more of a statement. One of the things that came up about park maintenance or green space maintenance yesterday during our DPW hearing was, you know, I issued a, you know, a challenge to, and I know that it's happening in DPW or found out yesterday, around trying to think through more creative ways to better manage the maintenance. One of the things that we've, examples, and I can send your team director the information on what they're doing in Philadelphia and a few other places where they've taken to replacing grass seed with other types of vegetation that don't grow as fast as a way to reduce budget, you know, the workload on crews to maintain park spaces. And I would think that somewhere, to the councilwoman's point about these smaller inlet lots, just like the one right behind my house, where, you know, you have row houses surrounded by a small park space, that would be, you know, an ideal space that we could not have to mow as much if it was clovers or something else planted there. And I know the initial upfront cost is something that we would need to look at. But other cities have taken to just planting different things to reduce their maintenance costs. And it's something that I think you should consider. Obviously, you can't do that with a large park. But if there are ways to reduce your workload with planting non-invasive species that don't grow as rapidly as just your traditional grass seed, I think would be helpful. And I'm happy to send some of the research that I've done. And I know DPW has a whole staff personnel looking into, you know, alternative ways to better maintain open lots and vacant lots. And maybe there's some opportunities to share some synergy there. So just, I'll pick it over to you if you guys aren't already considering that kind of thing. But I think it could be helpful. Because I mean, we don't have to have traditional grass at these spaces. We just need something that can be maintained, something that's green, that kids can play in. But more importantly, if we can take the workload off of you all to continue to make sure that these lots are mowed every seven days, there's resources that could be going somewhere else that I know you would probably like to free up, and your team would want to free up as well, potentially. I'm not saying it's a silver bullet, but something to look at. The other question I had was, in the budget book, on page 445, Service 646, first slide you had up, it mentions in the comments, it says that you've switched over to two different service or measures, frequency at which parks are inspected and receive maintenance, and percentage of permit holders, facility renters satisfied with city park maintenance. And you said that, in the book, it says that the stats weren't fully available for the current fiscal, or the last fiscal year, but the data was available for '18. Do you have that data available today, or am I misunderstanding what that's supposed to convey?
So I'm going to have Bill answer that question for you.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
I think this is inaccurate. I mean, these are measures that we want to start measuring because we think they're better than the measures that we had before.
I agree, that's why I wanted to see what the outcomes were for that.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we have them yet. I do know that our permits office asks permit holders, hey, what did you think of that pavilion? Or what did you think of that field? I don't know that we have it, like, systemically collected, but we could look into it. The other measure, frequency at which parks are inspected and receive maintenance, right now David and his team are developing and have developed kind of the questionnaire. And now they're getting it loaded onto mobile devices, and he's going to have his managers, you know, filling these out. But it's not fully baked yet. But by next budget year, we'll definitely have results to share.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. I thought those were much better measures than what we have currently right now.
Just one thing to add to that. So the city has in the past done a citywide survey, and we would like to do that again sometime in the next year. So some of these measures that show not applicable are things that we actually asked for in prior years. And we're actually working on RFP right now to do a citywide survey. So some of those measures about just satisfaction, general citizen satisfaction with various services could be part of that survey. That survey is very high level, and the feedback we got in the prior years we did it, that if it was too long and it took too long either via phone call or that people wouldn't finish the survey. So we're limited in the number of questions we can ask on that. But we do ask some simple things, like how satisfied are you with parks or fire service or whatnot. So that might be one thing that would be considered there. But we haven't mapped out the questions or have a vendor yet for that.
Okay. And just a last statement, Mr. Chair, I won't, you know, the question. But I think that really reviewing the inspection frequency and maintenance piece, I think, would be helpful because the measure that we do have, number of playgrounds with 100% functional components, fiscal year '18 was 77%, which, you know, in my household, that my mom would be like, that's family. And so I know that there's been staffing changes in the department to address this. So I am really looking forward to the outcomes of increased inspection and more accountability here because these playgrounds are excellent spaces for our young people, and they need to be safe as possible. But I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Snead?
Well, thank you. So this question's under urban forestry because I just wonder, what would be the goal, if you could, of how many more employees you would need to get some of this stuff done? And then how much money you would need to buy the equipment to then do the things at hand?
When you said how many more employees to do?
Because we need people to do it, right?
Right.
So when we talk about, you know, cutting the trees down, when you're talking about inspecting the sidewalks because the trees are falling, like, all that stuff takes people power. So what would be the goal of how many more people do we need to do this? And what do we estimate the cost? If this is budget, I'm thinking of people and money.
And just to be fair to us, I think that would be a question that I would like for us to research versus just giving you a number today or a dollar amount. But we, I will work with Eric, and we will definitely get a response. However, BMR wants us to respond. But I want to get the information, but I don't know the answer right this second.
I'm okay with that. It's just that I know that I get a lot of calls from constituents in terms of payment buckling, tree falling, tree that's dead that needs to be taken down, that's not per se on private property, that's considered our property. So I just, you know, that would be great if you can get back to me. I appreciate it.
We definitely will. Bill's going to talk, just real quick and mention something about how we are tackling the stump problem, real quick.
Councilwoman, I think the Director is exactly right. With a little bit of time, I mean, we have all the statistics and we have the unit costs for things. We could put numbers on it. But I would say, because we were talking about this the other day, Eric and I and his staff, that the inventory that we just did identified 5,000 total stumps in the city that need to be ground. And if the average cost of a stump is about 300 bucks, I mean, it can go anywhere from 200 to 500. But if it's 300, you know, that's 1.5 million. And right now, I think Eric allocates about $300,000 a year to stumps. So we could do that same kind of analysis as the Director said on some of these other categories. But we do know for stumps what it would cost to hit every stump in the city.
But I will tell you that we fixed that in the new RFP. The old RFP, we would cut a tree and leave the stump. Now they're removing the entire tree, including the stump. So that way, we're not leaving any stumps to have to come back to.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Moore, and to your staff. I appreciate, first off, your diligence in getting us some new benches in Eastwood. That had been a very long project, and you all moved quickly on that, and I appreciate it. I did want to raise a concern, which is partnership with city schools. This shows up for me in a couple of different ways. My colleague was talking in the other hearing about with rec centers and rec space and sort of how, as we get these new 21st century schools, and there's the potential for really transformative play space for our kids, it doesn't seem like there's partnership happening, which ultimately hurts our kids because then they get left out in the cold. And we know that the recs are already overburdened, that we have huge maintenance issues there. But it just seems like there should absolutely be a strong partnership. And then when it comes to playgrounds, we've talked a little bit about a potential playground in my district that would be proximate or even on school property, but would be really open to the community. And so my hope, and I was hoping you could comment, is that we really start to foster some genuine partnership between Baltimore City Public Schools and Wreckin Park. Because ultimately, we're all trying to serve children and families. And it feels like, and it's, I think, at least since I've been on council, it's felt like there's this disconnect, and there's this, like, territorial thing of, like, Wreckin Park over here and schools over here. And to me, that's a huge missed opportunity. Because at the end of the day, it's all of our kids. And if we could figure out some policies where we're able to utilize the 21st century space and city schools' kids are able to utilize rec centers and parks, I mean, we should all be in it together for our kids. And it's felt like that's been a tough partnership. So just from your office's perspective, wanted to hear sort of how you're thinking about working directly with our schools.
I truly echo and agree with what you're saying is that we all service the same kids in our communities. And what we're hoping is, we've started dialogue, we've had the conversation, and I feel that we are moving in the right direction together. I'll give you some examples is, you know, when I walked through the door, we had not solidified Wreckin Park going into any of the 21st century schools. We finally, we got an agreement, we're now in Fort Worthington, we're using that as a pilot to look at how we can partner on additional projects. Another most recent discussion, as Councilwoman Clark is familiar with, is there's a school that need, isn't used for some athletic facilities. We're building a new field, and we're working in conjunction with the school because in order for this high school to use this field, there's some additional amenities. And Dr. Santa Lisa's has committed to paying that difference in a form of a letter. We haven't physically received a number, but we have received a letter from her office saying that the school system is committed to that cost. So I really feel that we are moving in the right direction. But I think it's something I shared with a councilmember earlier is, we can, we're working, you know, between Dr. Santa Lisa's office, our office, to mend these partnerships. But then we have to figure out how it filters down. I think it's not at the executive level, it's getting our teams to work closely together at the school levels. And I think that's the next step in this process. And one of the things our office is doing is, we want to, we're hoping in July to have a breakfast with all of the school principals that we have, either rec centers in close proximity or on that school site, to share with them our vision, to have also, our center directors there as well, to try to figure out how we continue to strengthen this partnership, what are some of the challenges that they're having, what are some of the challenges we're having, and see if we can address some of them. So I really feel that we are moving, probably not as fast as I would love, or you, but I feel at least we're moving in the right direction and working together with the school system.
Well, I would just volunteer that if there is work that councilmembers can do to help bridge those gaps, really at the micro level, at the school or park and rec level, I know I'd be happy, and many of my colleagues would be happy, to help support that. Because, you know, again, when I got kids at Patterson Park Public Charter School, I know they're using Patterson Park, and I know they're using the Virginia S. Baker Rec Center and vice versa. And so there should be just some really intentional thought and planning around making sure, and I know Chris has thought about this a bunch, but just making sure we're strategic in that we're keeping spaces, recreation, park spaces, open as long as we can, and that we're utilizing some of this 21st century school money to advance your mission, as well as Dr. Santa Lisa's. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Middleton with a follow-up question.
Quick follow-up with the Councilman.
Quick follow-up with the council. I totally agree with everything that you're saying. And a real easy example is the Aquatic Center that is right there with the new 21st Century Pimlico Elementary Middle that's right on that campus. And that's an easy connect for teaching those children how to swim and just kind of integrating a daytime program with those students while they're also there on that campus on a daily basis is a wonderful example and a partnership. Thank you.
Okay. It's about 11:40, a little bit after. I'd like to transition in the next five minutes, but I know, I have one other question. And Councilman Burnett has a question as well. On page 476 in the budget book under Service, 654 Urban Forestry, one of the expenditures by activity is street tree planting and maintenance at about 3.2 million. Can you tell me what percentage of that activity is performed through partnership with community groups?
Eric, can you answer that question of what's the percentage of funding is used with partnerships like Blue Water, Baltimore, and other groups?
Well, well, I won't. No, it's not a performance measure, but 3.2 million is allocated to street planting and maintenance. And my question, I recognize the partnerships with Blue Water, Baltimore. It's more, I think that activities like street tree maintenance is something that can be performed by neighborhood groups, community groups. And I'm just wondering if any of that money is allocated, you know, through a partnership with, where that community is taking responsibility and maintaining, you know, those trees.
Good question. So you understand this question? His question? You come to the mic. Come to the mic.
How much is being used for tree planting versus the other kind of maintenance?
No, his point, his question is, with the 3.2 million that's allocated, are we partnering with any neighborhood groups in the maintenance of their trees in their neighborhoods? Is any money allocated going towards any kind of program that we have?
Minimal amount, but we do partner with the local groups who has a very successful program called Treekeepers. And that's forestry stewards. We have over 300 that have been trained, Charlie, is that correct? And they're spread throughout the city. And these folks can do trees, if you can imagine, trees generally five inches in diameter or less. They are trained by us. It's a free program. We, you know, it takes three, four training days to do it. And they come along and take care of a lot of the smaller trees throughout the city. As far as pruning for anything else or removals, it does fall solely to forestry. But as part of that 3.2 million is our operating budget. And that is, of course, includes our payroll for our in-house guys. And then also, we have a substantial tree maintenance contracts. We have at least three tree maintenance contracts, right?
Yeah, I'm, we can talk later. I just think that's an opportunity where communities can. And is any of that money MBE, WBE? Are there any?
They're asking if it's contract money?
No, he's asking, yeah, I mean, all the contracts have to go through the city procurement process.
Absolutely.
Set MBE, WBE goals, and they're all met before they're issued.
So what's the MBE, what's the MB firm or contractor for that particular activity?
What's the MBE goal like for our current Forest Valley contract, Kristi?
There's like four different contracts doing different.
It won't reach.
Kristi?
For the tree maintenance contract, it's called Johnson Tree Services. And it's over 8% what they dedicated to it. The prime contractor dedicated more than 8%, but that was the goal. And then it was 4% for WBE. And it's called A1 Safety. It's a woman-owned business, local to Baltimore.
So the MBE, MBE goal for that, for this activity is 8%?
That's what they dedicated from BOP, but the prime dedicated more than 8%. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
So the goal we set was 8%?
Yeah.
Is that consistent with other contract?
Oh, I don't know. That answer.
Why would we set such a low goal?
It becomes dependent on the types of people that are actually registered with the city. And in for, in tree maintenance, it's relatively low. We have another one where it's a concrete, so our pit creation contract, which has a 27 and 10%, 27 MBE and 10% WBE. So it's very dependent on the contracts. But we work with BOP, and they go through the list of people that are actually listed on those MBE and WBE lists that are registered with the city. And if there are not many on there, it holds up a lot of small contracts. So we have several very small locally minority-owned businesses working on our pit maintenance and pit creation contracts. And having high sets for that actually limits the capabilities of hiring them as actual contractors sometimes.
So Jeff, if I can add item, can we, can I see what the MBE breakdown is for this particular activity?
Again, there's like more different contracts.
Yeah, that's fine. I'd like to see all of the contracts. It just seems like there would be a plethora of minority firms, contractors that could provide services in this particular area. And 8% just seems insufficient goal or target for that. Councilman Burnett? Oh, I'm sorry, if you, if you have a com, Councilman Burnett?
Yeah.
Oh, is there another? Okay. Really quick, one of the things, as I was sitting here, the question about partnerships with city schools also pushed me to sort of ask around any partnerships with the Department of Human Services on homeless outreach. I know at one point in my district, I was handing out flyers on a block near the Gwinns Falls Trail and saw folks walking into the park. And after talking to a few residents, realized that those folks were actually living in the park. I made that referral to the Human Services folks to do some outreach and try and connect those folks to resources. Does your agency have protocols in place to make referrals as well to help homeless individuals who may be living in park spaces that are discovered by your crews or staff?
I want to answer that.
Councilman, yes, we do. I mean, I could probably name half a dozen places where we probably have homeless encampments, encampments right now. And before either park maintenance or the rangers encounter those groups, we make a call down to homeless services and human services and either go in in tandem or they go in first. But yeah, I mean, we have a very good partnership with them.
And is that outreach tracked and those referrals tracked?
I don't know the answer to that, to tell you the truth. I could probably count them on one hand or two hands, so there's not that many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'd still be helpful to know. And if we could get how many you have or are aware of for the committee to review. I think it's something that we should continue to look into and figure out, you know, some better strategies to help folks who are in those spaces, as should any other agency. So.
Yeah.
Did you need that to be a formal request? If so, if you could restate that.
Formal request for the number of referrals in the last two fiscal years, I guess, to the homeless services team for outreach for individuals living in park spaces. Thank you.
Director Moore, I want to commend you for the outstanding job that you and your team are doing. I know we talked about the youth recreation, youth activities in part already, but you've just been doing a fantastic job. I want to thank you for what your team did at Shake and Bake Family Fund Center on Penn Ave. And getting Christmas Attics Rec Center on Utah Place in my district reopened as well. And really looking forward to continuing to work with you guys. Your team's responsive. You guys are on the ball. I've seen considerable improvements in your department over the past two years. And I attribute that to your leadership and to the quality team that you have around you. I got a question for Mr. Deal. Or a couple of questions, keep them brief, though. And Eric, I know that your, your budget is really handicapped. I mean, there's no other way to put it. You simply don't have the resources that you need. A frequent concern that I have are trees that are overgrown along street, near streetlights. What's the backlog right now to get a tree trimmed in the city?
Six months.
And what is the cycle to trim trees in the city? Like, does every tree get trimmed?
Baltimore, and as I can tell, has never had a cycle. So with, with the administration giving us a budget enhancement, a few years back, we had a pilot program to rotate and prune every tree in the city that needs pruning. And that's called our proactive pruning program. Right now, based on current funding, our cycle is about at least eight to 10 years. You think it's longer? The cycle really should be four to seven, four to six years would be nice to cycle through the city. And we're probably at least twice that right now.
Okay. Are you prioritizing public safety-related requests specifically when there's a crime on a block and police go out there and say that the block isn't well lit? Are you prioritizing those?
Yes, we do. We do it through two ways. When we do our proactive pruning, neighborhood by neighborhood, we target street lights, security cameras, stop signs, and we make sure those limbs are pruned back. In addition, Ms. Angstead represents the department at the VRI, walk-throughs and the weekly meetings. Well, more than weekly, right? And then those are particularly targeted, what comes up in the VRI zones. And so we work rapidly to go ahead and do that pruning in addition from a safety violent crime reduction standpoint.
And is that a combination of in-house and contractors?
Yes, it's a combination of both.
What percentage is in-house?
I would not say more than 50/50. But Andre Heidelberg, our general foreman, is here.
I don't need an exact number. 50, general just, that's fine. Okay. I got more questions, but I'll go to, who's next?
You're it.
I'm it. All right. We got another, oh, no, 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 no. We got another hour and a half of questions.
So we can transition.
Yeah. Last question on this topic. And pardon me if I was in a meeting. Did anyone talk about the backlog of getting trees planted and tree pits, all that? Okay. What is, if I have a constituent who wants a new tree, and they already have a pit, but they don't have a tree in it, or there's a stump in it, just walk me through all that real quickly.
So what we've historically had, and we've added a lot more trees. We now plant by neighborhood regardless of whether people ask for a tree. But in the case you're talking about, the residents can either go through our Tree Baltimore website a number of different ways, and we will plant a tree the following season. So if you have a constituent putting in a request in an open tree pit now, he or she should have a tree planted this fall, the next season. If that's not happening, that's a correction we need to make. And on occasion, some slip through the cracks.
Great. So what's, so I'm sure there's a process you would prefer us to use than to just email you like we always do. And thank you for always responding.
Sure.
What is that process? You want us to go to Tree Baltimore?
TreeBaltimore.org. Even though it's a dot org, that is, just remind everybody, that is the city's program for overall tree coordination of all plantings throughout the city. TreeBaltimore.org is a good way to go. Charlie, can you correct me? It can also be done through 3-1-1 requests, or that's now been taken away? It used to be through 3-1-1, but that's no longer a method.
Do we, would we prefer it through 3-1-1?
No.
It's also A-OK for you to email us. Basically.
Can you, can you come up and grab a mic, sir? Or right there? Yep. Thank you.
Hello. So there are two different ways that we go about getting people trees. So if you were to forward us somebody that wanted a tree in your district and was willing to plant and water that tree themselves, I could literally deliver a tree tomorrow.
I, do you got a pen?
Uh, yeah.
1519 East Ford Avenue. Thank you.
So we go through two ways. So there's the contractual tree planting, which is what Eric talked about, where if a request comes in and the person is not interested in planting it or maintaining it themselves, we would put it on the next season's contract. So any request we get until, from now until about mid-July would be planted in fall. Anything after that has to be put on the following season, so it would be spring. But again, we also order extra trees that we give out to Blue Water Baltimore, Baltimore Tree Trust, all those nonprofits, as well as local community groups. And I know there's quite a few in your district that reach out to us, will put in a tree order. And we'll get those trees for them. We always order extra. So when somebody comes to us late in the season and actually wants a tree and can plant it themselves, we can actually deliver usually within a week or two.
They can't plant it themselves. Can you, can you get that one planted for them, or do we need?
No, so if they can't plant it, then we would have to put it on that contract.
Okay.
So for fall.
So we can get that one in on the fall?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is it 1519 Ford?
East Ford Avenue. Yes, sir. Thank you. Last thing is, when, when you are planting trees by neighborhood, I know sometimes there's folks that don't want the tree in front of their house because they're not going to take care of it. Can we opt them out?
The short answer is yes, because the bottom line is, nobody wants a constituent or resident to have, and some of these folks get very excited they don't want a tree. Thankfully, it's only 2%, 3%, 4%.
Excited's a good word.
You've had them. I think every council district has had a few. And we will back off. Often, I'll personally have a chat with them. I'm not going to convince some longtime residents, but we will back off and they can opt out. Otherwise, we do plant the entire neighborhood. We let them know in advance the tree is coming, and we plant out the block.
How do you, how do you let them know?
Largely through door hangers and through community meetings, both. Both we do that and our planting partners, Blue Water Baltimore, Baltimore Tree Trust.
Got it. And TreeBaltimore.org. Okay, got it. And the last thing is, do you have a list of where you're, what neighborhoods you're planning to plant in and the addresses? I think I've seen that in the past. I might have asked for that two years ago, and you sent me some.
We do. We can, and we'll be glad to provide that for you. As Charlie mentioned, we formulate it by early summer. We get with BOP and get the trees ordered if it's going to be, well, we do it regardless, whether it's our own trees we give away or whether we're having the contractor go to certain addresses. We can provide that list, yes.
So can you get that to us? And those will be trees that'll be planted in the fall?
That is correct, yes.
So if you could get that to Mr. Amoros, and then moving forward, if you could get, as soon as you formulate that list and you have a final list, every year, if you could start sending that to the council? Because we might be able to save you a couple of dollars because we each have two or three constituents that just don't want the tree in front of their house. So we can kind of save you some.
I think that's an excellent idea. We've internally talked about letting city council know more in advance what's coming, so you're not caught by surprise by your residents on the occasional concern this brought up.
Eric, outstanding answers. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Eric.
Hi, Councilman Dorsey.
How you doing? Quick question, it's not necessarily for you. I'll ask this a second, actually. I want to talk about just kind of the general health of forested areas in the city. I had some questions yesterday. Bill, Bill answered some questions, but I also talked about this with DPW because it's relevant to our source water quality. But can you talk about the, kind of a forecast of impacts of, kind of, the loss of forest regeneration or stifled forest regeneration, particularly due to, thank you, particularly due to kind of an exploding deer population and also the impacts of invasive plants, keeping us, keeping our forests from being able to regenerate? What, what we could be facing as a city, however many years out, and what that's going to mean for impacts to the city and our forested areas? And, you know, kind of why we should be doing something to address that?
These are great questions, so thank you for asking that. It's something I've been, on my agenda since I've come here eight years ago. And the gentleman to your, to your right certainly can vouch for a number of these issues. So as Charlie, when he teaches his classes, the urban forest is everything in the city. Urban forest includes street trees, parkland trees, everything. If we're talking specifically about our wooded areas, deer have a very detrimental effect. We met with the folks of Dickeyville a couple of years ago. We have a deer report. We have herd surveys. We know the level of deer in our, at three of our major parks. And in each case, the herd of deer level exceeds by far what it should be, and therefore, it strips our forests. So we need to take on deer management. It's a political touchy issue. The number one way for deer management is to cull the herds. But in due time, we'll be bringing it up through the administration and address that issue. The one part, I think, of urban forestry that's missing in Baltimore, and to Mr. Moores and Mr. Von Der Seck's credit, they've been supporting this, is invasive species overall, not just the bugs. Emerald ashbore, killing all our ash trees, deer, but invasive vegetation is in addition. So now, in addition to tree planting, proper tree care, proactive work inventory, recycling or Woodacamp Small, which is now a nationally recognized program, the missing piece has been invasive vegetation. So we now have two full-time staff members, and we are having, about to award a contract through BOP. And that will address targeted areas where we're going to reduce the invasive vegetation. And that does two things. It allows the natives to grow and fill in. It makes for a more natural resource conservation, smart ecosystems. And it literally enhances and increase the tree canopy of Baltimore. So we are addressing that currently.
Are we, I mean, projected or on target to lose dens- Are we, I mean, projected or on target to lose density of forest? Like, are we plotting a path where we're actually reversing course on the kind of loss of forest density in wooded areas?
Yes, we are. One of the things I was really pleased when Director Moore came on board, he was able to announce something, I guess, maybe you've heard this, is we're one of the few major cities in the United States that have reversed and are actually increasing our tree pan canopy cover.
But that's, but that's, I mean, that's significantly due to tree pit planting and a real attention to that. I mean, does that, are we actually reversing what's happening in our wooded areas?
Yes, we have been, will we in the next two, three years? We're about to lose ash trees. We have a program, the administration supports an Emerald Ashbore replacement program. That's mainly for our streets and for our developed parkland. All these wooded areas, they're going to remove their, the ash are going to die there also. Our estimate, it takes $3.2 million to replace those ash trees that are in the woods, so we will be losing those. So to your point, are we going to have an increase in tree canopy two, three years from now? No, it may dip down for a bit before we can bring it back up, because we do have this invasive species about, that's in that process right now, wiping out every green ash and white ash, not only in Baltimore, but throughout Maryland. So it's a challenge. And ideally, in order to keep it increasing, Charlie did some back-of-the-envelope, well, it was some back-of-the-envelope. A few years ago, we thought we'd have to plant probably 25,000 net increase in trees per year to get to a canopy goal at some point, a 40% canopy cover, which may be unrealistic at this point. We're probably planning along with our partners, and what we give away, probably no more than 10,000 trees per year right now.
I see, okay. Well, thank you. I have just another question that I think I know the answer to, because Jenny's given me the answer, but I just want to make sure this one more time. Does Rec and Parks allow for the use of chemicals in any of the mowing that it does?
It might be better if Bill or.
Can you speak to that, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, our mowing contractor is allowed to use weed killer and string trimmers.
What's the second thing?
Well, string trimmers, I mean, that's non-chemical means, so they'll either use a physical means to get rid of weeds, or they'll use chemicals, yes.
Why, are there, there are a lot of people that say we shouldn't be using chemicals for any of this. Why are we allowing for chemicals, I guess, is my question? DPW doesn't allow for any chemicals used in any of their mowing work?
Oh, mowing for vacant lots. I think the amount that our contractor uses chemicals is minimal, frankly, because I can, I can see the work that they do. But it's, it's accepted means of controlling weeds.
Would it significantly increase costs if we were to prohibit use of chemicals for mowing and such?
It's something we can ask the contractor, certainly a question to be asked.
I'd like to know that.
Sure.
Thank you, Bill.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, this is for recreation. I heard it said that, Director, you were interested in having councils, recreation councils in all the centers? Yes?
Yes, yes, I guess I'm slightly confused because I'm saying, have we, are we?
Oh, I'm sorry, we were, oh, we were, oh, just.
We have plans and still sitting here.
I'll wait for the recreation part.
Okay, anyone else on this panel? Okay, we are now in recess, we are now back in session, that quickly. Recreation and Parks, all of their services, fiscal year 2020 budget. DPW, planning, thank you all for being here for support, for moral support and technical.